Thank you, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
Do we have any conflict of interest?
I'm going to handle it. So our recognition is not only for rewards or recognized achievements in our communities, but the focus on the accomplishments of students, employees, and our citizen volunteers deserve the county's Princedever. This month, our employee of the month is courtroom deputy Robert Womack. Robert, please come on. Sheriff, please join. So, Deputy Womack has been selected as the county's employee of the month for June. Womack joined Prince Edward County November 2012 and has been praised for his punctuality, reliability, and can-do mentality. He consistently arrives early, performs his duties without disruptions to the courts, and remains dedicated to serving the citizens of Prince Edward County. We appreciate his hard work and dedication over the years, look forward to many more. I would like to add that he was nominated by our three judges who appreciate the service that he gives in protecting this courtroom. Sheriff, if you could come over here. We're going to slide back here and get a photo. Sheriff.
Congratulations.
Okay, at this time, we do the public participation. Has anybody signed up?
We have two, Mr. Chairman.
Got two. All right. First, we have Howard Armstead. Just state your name and please leave, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Howard Armstead, 706 A Hill Street. Today, Robert Kennedy Jr. dissolved the 17-member Advisory Committee for our Immunization Practices that advises the CDC on vaccines. That is a dangerous omen. If you inspect the war memorials in front of the courthouse here, you'll notice that 50 men from Prince Edward County died in World War II, 24 in World War I, and 16 have died in the war since then. That totals 86. However, Prince Edward County lost 90 people who died of COVID-19 in 2020 through 2022. That's four more than all those lost in all those foreign wars. Prince Edward County lost more people to COVID than average in Virginia because our vaccination rate was lower than the Virginia average. Today, the Trump-Kennedy anti-vaccine health policy threatens the life of every person in this room and every person in the United States, every single person. I wrote two books, Understanding COVID-19: How 500,000 American Lives Could Have Been Saved, and Dear Bill Gates: How to End Zero Pandemic Failure. If I had to retitle those today, I would have said we could have saved 800,000 lives, not just 500,000 lives, if we had done the right thing. Last August, after I gave copies of these two books to Senator Tim Kaine, his office called me to ask to provide them an analysis of the danger of H5N1 influenza. It took me three months to read 450 medical journal articles and write a 48-page paper medical essay, and I've given that to the clerk. I've given you all the synopsis of that. The bottom line is that an H5N1 influenza pandemic that most scientists think will eventually hit us could be 10 times as deadly as COVID-19 was, or worse. That could kill 900 people in Prince Edward County. The bad news is the Trump-Kennedy administration is anti-vaccine. That may cost millions of American lives. The second bad news is that the two drugs the CDC claims will help against H5N1 influenza, Tamiflu and Zofluza, the virus quickly develops resistance to. So after a couple of months into a pandemic, they will be completely useless for anybody. The good news is that during my research, I discovered three drugs that will help against all influenza and can save the lives of probably 80% of those who would die without them. Those three drugs are selenium, low-dose aspirin, and naproxen, also known as Aleve. Together, those three drugs are known as SAAN therapy, S-A-N, selenium, aspirin, naproxen. Together, they only cost $10 to save a life from deadly H5N1 influenza, or any other influenza or COVID. Does I recommend everybody keep these three medicines on hand at home just in case H5N1 goes pandemic, which epidemiologists predict it will, we just don't know when, this year, next year, year after. It's better to be safe than sorry because the Trump-Kennedy administration anti-vaccine health policy will provide you no protection at all. It goes against both science and good public health. Good luck to you all, but with the current administration, no one will be protected against the next pandemic. So be prepared. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Next, we have James Redford.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Make sure this microphone is working. I watch you on YouTube. Sometimes mics work, sometimes it doesn't, so always be sure it does, you know? But good evening. My name is James Redford, and I have the honor to serve as Assistant Chief of Prospect Fire Department, but I'm also the Training Officer for the Prince Edward Area Firefighter Association. And so later on in your agenda, you have, under your Public Safety Committee, you're going to be discussing the option for the Joint 911 Emergency Communications Center. So we like to do our due diligence and come and show our words of encouragement and our support for you all when you discuss those things, in hopes that you will move forward with the organization of that center. So, you know, when somebody dials 911, most time it's the worst day in their life, right? And so we want to be sure that we can respond as most efficiently as we can. And one option with this Joint 911 Center will be just that. It will help speed things up, help us respond. When I say "us," all emergency services, right? So fire, rescue, as well as law enforcement. And so, you know, we definitely see the benefits in that. And so as a representation of the Prince Edward Area Firefighter Association, we want to let you know that we fully support the idea and moving forward with the Joint Emergency Communications Center. We know that it's long overdue. We applaud the sheriff and all the other staff that's had a role in getting this thing moving forward. So we look forward to it. And again, thanks for all the support that you've given, all the first responders in the county, and we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good to do. Is anyone else that'd like to speak? Okay. For supervisor comments, Ms. Emmett.
Thank you all for being here this evening. I appreciate the crowd for that, your stuff, and your time to keep us accountable and to keep us ready. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate you, and feel free to voice your concerns.
I agree with what the previous board member said. This is your time to show your concerns about what happens in your county. Thank you for being here.
Okay. Mr. Gillum?
Glad to see you all tonight, and appreciate Jade's comments and everybody that spoke so far. Glad to see you all over here. Thank you.
Good evening. I voice the sentiments of other board members. Good to see you here. Good to have you participate in our meeting.
After those sentiments, I hope the recent storms didn't harm your property, and I hope everybody's doing well. Thanks so much for coming.
Glad to see y'all here tonight, and always glad to see you full house. Then we will want to approve of the minutes.
The press. I'm going to say for the first two conditions of elections, I'd like to make a motion to approve them as presented.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Yes, or Jenkins?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Emmett? Okay. All right. And now we have Ms. Kristy White. Kristy White, I mean, will be up with Yak Attack.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'll just read a brief bio, and I welcome Dave to come up and speak to you. So Dave is an accomplished executive with over 25 years of experience leading high-growth businesses in outdoor sporting goods and consumer product industries. He currently serves as CEO of Yak Attack, a Farmville-based innovator and U.S. manufacturer of premium kayak fishing accessories and marine products. Yak Attack has accelerated product innovation, expanded into new markets, including electric propulsion and surf fishing. I would now like to welcome Mr. Martin to the podium to speak about Yak Attack, its impact on the community, employment opportunities, and plans for the future for this business spotlight.
Thank you, Jeff. Board, thank you very much for having us here this evening to talk to you. We think it's a privilege to be here and a privilege to be able to voice our concerns with you and our great experience here in Farmville. You know, Yak Attack started 15 years ago. Our local founder was Luther Cypher, and he really built this business up with a passion about the community, providing people with skills and more than just a job. And so he sold the business two and a half years ago. I've been here now for about two years. My family had a manufacturing business called Penn Fishing Reels, Penn Reels, and so I grew up with that, was CEO of Penn at a young age, and have a huge value for family business and running a business as a family, so our employees are more than employees. And since I've been here, it's really been a privilege in the community. You know, everyone here, I would say, is hardworking. People are resilient. People are caring about each other, and that in itself really wants us, you know, makes us want to stay here and build this business. So we've been growing rapidly and adding to the business. We have a great core of team members that have come up over the years, but as we grow, it's challenging to find technical leadership and technical experience in a rural area like this without a lot of manufacturing. And so when we're looking at designers, engineers, technical leadership, that's something that we really have had to grow ourselves. And I would say that the community has really been supportive of us, whether it's Longwood or others, in helping us build out a team of people and grow that technical experience. But I will be honest with you. So we were just working on acquisition, the potential for maybe 100 more jobs. That didn't come through, but as we thought about the growth and adding that many jobs to this community quickly, and technical, a lot of those are technically oriented jobs, how do we do that? And so that's some of our challenges going forward. We're committed to the community. We really appreciate the local support we get from the county and from the town and from the government here. It's a great place to do business. And so, you know, my goal here in the next year as we grow is to build a business that's long-term sustainable, that's investing in people and trying to bring careers, not just jobs, continuing to look for partnerships to educate and grow, both inside and outside our building for people. You know, I think, you know, there's a lot of twists and turns happening now in the world with manufacturing tariffs and trade and all those, but I think we've proven that we can innovate, we can do things here effectively in the United States, you can be profitable, you don't have to farm everything outside. And, you know, it's our prayer that that continues, that mentality continues, and we can continue to support adding more and more jobs here. So I appreciate your listening to me, and that's a little bit about Yak Attack.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you. Okay, Ms. Chilton White.
Hello again. So thank you for allowing me to be here tonight, and on pages 53 and 315 of your packets, you will find my Economic Development and Tourism Department monthly reports, from which I'll provide a summary. After my summary, I'll return to page 53 to address a request from the IDA for the board to take action on. So my department has been busy wrapping up a lot of projects and preparing to launch more regarding economic development. The Strategic Economic Development Plan, or SEDP as we call it, is almost complete. The final revisions are being made, and the full report will be presented at the next regular IDA meeting on June 27. Several grant reimbursement requests have been submitted recently, including a $62,084.79 request for the Tobacco Commission Five Pillar Meats Grant, a $53,000 request for the Tobacco Commission Hit Park Grant, and a $101,700 surplus for the VDP Hit Park Grant, again. Regarding tax reinvestment incentive grants, we wrapped this season up with $7,787.03 awarded to Sandy River Distillery for tax year 2024. We've also been working with the Mary E. Branch Heritage Center board on their plans to fundraise for the redevelopment of that site. I recently facilitated a meeting with a board member and engineering consultants to learn more about state and federal brownfield redevelopment funding opportunities. We also attended a SVCC Workforce Development Board meeting where I represented the county to discuss potential SVCC, a potential SVCC workforce development site at the Mary E. Heritage Center after it's redeveloped. We have continued to apply for grants to support infrastructure developments at the Hit Park, in addition to meeting biweekly with Timmons and Avio to discuss marketing and developing the site. Regarding tourism, switching gears, visitation at the visitor's center is starting to pick back up, as it usually does this time of year. Phone inquiries, video views, and center visits are also trending positively. We're now fully staffed at the visitor's center, so we're grateful for that. We welcome a new part-time travel counselor. Her name is Shirley Jackson Brown, and she's a great addition to the team. We recently received a grant that will help us build out the Explore Prince Edward Tourism website, and we will be sure to provide more information when this project launches. The last Tourism Council regular meeting was held on April 16, and we discussed current projects and new tourism promotion initiatives, and the next regular meeting will be held on June 18. On behalf of Virginia's Crossroads, Farmville and Prince Edward County hosted the biannual Civil War Trails Board Meeting in early April. This is the first time that the county was selected to host the board during their biannual meeting as a member of the Regional Tourism Marketing Group, Virginia's Crossroads. We represented the county, helped coordinate the group's accommodations, itineraries, and transportation, and also fellowshiped with that board, which comprised of representatives from Maryland, North Carolina, Tennessee, West Virginia, and Pennsylvania for the three days that they convened. We are excited that Moton was selected as the site to host the VA 250 Mobile Exhibit during the week of September 13. As you all may know, this date also coincides, or this date also coincides with the weekend of the Heart of Virginia Festival and also Longwood's Parent Weekend, so many visitors will be in our community at that time. We're now planning for the promotion of the exhibit's arrival, and that includes applying for additional program funding to make it a really successful event and a big deal. And lastly, I hope you all got a chance to check out the spring issue of the Farmville Magazine. The grand opening for the VA 250 permanent exhibit in the visitor's center was highlighted, so that was nice to see. Of course, thank you again for your time and support, and I will try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Okay, so turning back to page 53, there is a memo in your packets, and the second item that you see there is what I wanted to just present to you all. So I'll just read that out. The Industrial Development Authority is requesting that the Board of Supervisors approve the name of Enterprise Lane for the new access road in the county business park. And of course, there's a simple motion at the bottom.
I move that the Board of Supervisors accept the recommendation of the Industrial Development Authority and approve the name Enterprise Lane for the new access road in the county business park.
Mr. Second, ma'am. Okay. Ms. Emmett?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
At this time, we will have a County Recyclables Contract. Mr. Jeff Jones.
Good evening, everyone. The 1st of April, we put a RFP out for the recyclables for Prince Edward County. As you all know, we had a increase, Steppes was going to increase prices effective July 1, so me and Sarah got together and put a RFP out, and we got one reply, Elite Recycling. Elite, you see where they, on page 57, the 25-26 cost for Steppes would be $73,839.95. Elite put a bid in at $49,200, and that would be with a $40 a ton processing fee and a $175 hauling fee, which is still cheaper than, about half cheap is what Steppes wants to go to. If you look at the electronics processing, we are going to move that in-house, since my drivers will not have to haul the recyclable containers. We're going to move their TVs, electronics, computers in-house. We will process that ourselves, and Elite has agreed to buy that from us at market value. And based on the tonnage from 23 to 24, we came up with about $3,500 worth of value, which will offset the cost of Elite hauling them for us. So we'll just bring them to the landfill, separate them, and Elite will haul them back to their processing facility in Brookneal. And that's about it. You just see the difference in the price? You know, they're going to charge us $40, where the other one would be about $60 instead of, and then $2,000 a ton for plastic, where Elite's going to do it for $40 a ton.
Say that again.
Steppes wanted to process plastic at $2,000 a ton. Elite Recycling will process it for $40 a ton.
Wow. Didn't give a one bid yet?
We did not give a one bid, yes, sir. We did a pre-bid, a non-required pre-bid, so you could come if you, you know, if you wanted to, you could come. Elite was the only company that showed up. They've been in constant talks with me a couple of times a week since then. They are eager to do business with us. They have told me that they are implementing a new laser in the future that will identify multiple types of plastic. So in the future, we will be able to recycle more types of plastic than what we do now. So which is a good thing, which will bring our recycling numbers up for DEQ and, you know, for the county environment and all, that'll bring our numbers up. Does anybody have any questions or comments, or I'll try to answer what I can.
I would recommend we authorize the Ken Administrator to negotiate, execute a three-year contract with the option of two additional two-year extensions with Elite Recycling to commence July 1, 2025.
Quick question before, I mean, you're more than welcome to second, but before we vote, is it going to, for three years, it's going to stay at this price with no increase? Is that correct?
Locked in.
Before we lock in?
Proposal had this, had that, those terms, and these were the prices that were provided, so we have not sat down and had contract negotiations with Elite, but the prices they gave us...
Are the ones we're plugging into the contract?
That's what, yeah, that's the one that should go in the contract.
The prices they provided in your proposal had no, you know, escalators or anything?
Correct. Correct. That's the reason why I'm asking. Before I would vote for a three-year contract, I'd want to make sure that there's no escalators in it, and it's locked in.
You might on the 4th or 5th, and that's what we would have in the negotiation.
Right, right. If the three years should be locked in, if there, if we don't know that, I would like for the board to table that until we found out, but that's totally up to the board.
Given the timing and the fact this is our meeting, I would request that you vote on the proposal with it locked in for three years. We can always bring it back if it's not.
And I'm pretty sure it is, it should be anyway. During negotiation, the first initial three-year term should be at the cost that they quoted.
And Supervisor Emmert? The electronic price will change as the market does.
Yeah, I understand. That's...
Okay. I just want to make sure you...
Yep. One of the other reasons why I asked that, because if we ever decided to go in-house with the cardboard, do we, are we able to get out of the cardboard side of it versus everything else? Do we know that?
So again, we have not. We haven't negotiated the contract.
Okay.
The current draft has...
Cardboard included.
County has the ability to provide notice in the contract.
If we want to get out, if we want to exit.
Okay. Okay, we all like to vote on tonight?
You have a...
We have a motion, just need a second.
Okay, I'll second. Okay. Supervisor Goode?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Yes for Jenkins?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Townsend? Supervisor Emmert? I mean, yes. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Y'all have a good afternoon.
Okay. Now we have the public hearings, and Mr. Love can be here tonight, so Mr. Stan...
I'm pitching tonight, Mr. Chairman. So we do, we have six public hearings this evening. The first public hearing, which is on page 59 of your packet, is a request from Dogwood Properties, Green Bay, Virginia LLC, for a special use permit to operate a restaurant on land totaling 1 and 1/2 plus or minus acres, denoted as Tax Map Parcel 107A44, with an address of 8306 Patrick Henry Highway, Green Bay, Virginia, located on Route, US Route 360. Property is zoned AC or agricultural conservation. Public hearing notice was published in the May 28 and May 30 additions of the Farmville Herald, and the joining property owners have been notified. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this request, their May 20 meeting, where citizens spoke in favor of the application. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of special use permit forwarding the request to the board for public hearing. Attachment 5 in your packet is a list of potential conditions as recommended by the Planning Commission. The purpose of the special use permit is to allow for the establishment of a restaurant in an existing vacant building. The building was...
If we want to get out, if we want to exit.
Okay.
Okay, would you all like to vote on tonight?
You have a.
We have a motion, just need a second.
Okay, I'll second. Okay. Supervisor Goode?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Yes for Jenkins?
Yes.
Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Townsend? Supervisor Emmett?
I'm a yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Y'all have a good afternoon.
Okay. Now we have to public hearings, and Mr. Love can be here tonight, so.
I'm pitching tonight, Mr. Chairman. So we do, we have six public hearings this evening. The first public hearing, which is on page 59 of your packet, is a request from Dogwood Properties, Green Bay, Virginia LLC, for a special use permit to operate a restaurant on land totaling one and a half plus or minus acres denoted as Tax Map Parcel 107A44 with an address of 8306 Patrick Henry Highway, Green Bay, Virginia, located on Route, US Route 360. Property is zoned AC or agricultural conservation. Public hearing notice was published in the May 28 and May 30 additions of the Farmville Herald, and the adjoining property owners have been notified. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this request, their May 20 meeting where citizens spoke in favor of the application. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of special use permit forwarding the request to the board for public hearing. Attachment five in your packet is a list of potential conditions as recommended by the Planning Commission. The purpose of the special use permit is to allow for the establishment of a restaurant in an existing vacant building. The building was formerly used as the gasoline station, but it's been closed for many years. County staff is of the opinion the use is generally compatible with the zoning district, but will have minimal impacts on surrounding properties as far as traffic and noise. And I believe our applicant is here tonight, where our applicant would like to speak.
Good evening.
Been in the restaurant business for a long time, like 23 years in Burkeville, so, and I think it's a good, would be a good location and would work. Everybody keeps saying, when are you going to open a restaurant? So we're going to open a restaurant. Most of you have eaten in a restaurant in years in the past, so you know it.
If I could say something, I used to come to a restaurant at Hilltop, never had a problem. Wonderful food, nice atmosphere, so you know what you're doing with the restaurant.
We're going to try to seat around 45 people. We're going to have like some picnic tables and the go-orders. We'll have brick oven pizza, and we'll have barbecue, but we'll have a full-service menu like we had. We'll have breakfast, it's going to be, start at 6:00 in the morning. If you want to eat breakfast at 8:00 at night, we're still going to have breakfast, so.
Oh, you're going to do buffet style like you used to do on Hilltop?
Not to start with.
Okay.
Everything is so expensive, it's kind of hard to do buffets.
Okay. But I, I see the building, I think it's a nice resource that's coming to the, to the Green Bay area, and the building, I mean, you would never have thought there was a garage.
Yeah.
I mean, it's coming, looking pretty good.
Yeah, we put a roof on it and a porch, and I mean, it does look nice.
Yeah, it does. And I, I see your plan in, in the packet too, so I, I think it's just a wonderful idea and appreciate you bringing it to, hopefully it's just a fruition, fruition, okay?
Appreciate you also.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Mr. Chair, we're ready to open the public hearing.
Okay. Anybody like to speak on this?
Sir, can you check the sheets, see if anybody signed up?
Will you resign?
No, I believe it can stay in the, yeah, with the special use permit. Yep, yep.
The, they gave the enterprise, it's in the enterprise name too, right?
I think it is.
I think it is. She's, she won't be, probably not for this.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on the Dogwood Properties restaurant application? Hearing now, Mr. Chair, you can go ahead and close the public hearing.
Go ahead, Supervisor.
I would make a motion that we go forward with this. Second, ma'am.
And that, is that with the conditions that are recommended?
With the conditions that are recommended, yes. From the Planning Commission, correct.
Take a vote.
Supervisor Goode?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Jenkins, yes. To Patty Cooper?
Yes.
To Townsend?
Yes.
Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
All right, that one's been approved. Next public hearing is for an application request by Michael and Helen Roya for a special use permit to operate a rural events center on land totaling 136.49 plus or minus acres denoted as Tax Map Parcel 55A32 with an address of 25943 Prince Edward Highway, Rice, Virginia, on US Route 460. Property is zoned agricultural conservation or A1. Public hearing notice was published in the May 28 and May 30 additions of the Farmville Herald, and adjacent property owners notified. Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 20 where citizens spoke in favor and some in opposition to the application. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of a special use permit forwarding the request to the Board of Supervisors for public hearing. Attachment five is a list of potential conditions as recommended by the Planning Commission. The purpose of the special use permit is to allow for the establishment of a rural events center. County staff is of the opinion the use is generally compatible with the zoning district, but will have minimal impacts on surrounding properties. Before we start the public hearing, Mr. and Mrs. Roya, would you all like to make any comments?
Good evening.
Approximately three years ago, my wife and I purchased this property, and existing environment, it has a 100 by 200-foot arena. And some of the concerns, I think, related to some of the conditions set by the Planning Commission are related to lighting and PA speaker sound system that was set up on some telephone poles. We removed all of that, and that's all now been replaced with soft solar lighting. Those are all pointed down, they're not pointed at any residents. And part of the packet submission to Planning Commission shows distances and various other factors related to the property overall. We've done a lot of investment with the correct permits, and the special use permit is to have this facility used as a wedding reception environment or business meeting or anything for that matter. It is not motocross-related, so I just wanted to put that out there. We've, this, the site deal, again, review the VDOT for the entry to the property. We have sufficient parking. The whole front lot, which is about three and a half acres, belongs to us as well. There's also another lot as part of the property. And again, lighting will be related to mostly solar, but inside the building, of course, there will be electrical lighting. 40 by 80 with 12 by 80 lean-to's, brand-new facility, it's all put together. We are still constructing, it's not completely finished yet, and we want to enclose the site. And some of the pictures in the packet are related to the picturesque environment. We happen to be up on the hill, and the sunsets are amazing. So one of the conditions related to what the Planning Commission stated is relevant to the occupancy. So the occupancy number was specifically determined based on the septic system build. It's 1,250 gallons, it's five 100-foot lines, leash lines, and that number is, is generally speaking, how many gallons of water will be consumed in a day. Typically, the fire marshal sets the occupancy level, but one of the conditions in there related to 125-plus staff. And I think that number is a little low, or could be, and wanted the board to review and maybe ask any questions they have relevant to that particular condition to have that removed. All other conditions related to what the Planning Commission stated, we agree to in terms.
What kind of number would you?
I'm sorry to hear.
What kind of number would you endeavor to have?
So typically, that's 3,200 square feet, that could be 200, 250. And if you use an example, like if you have a wedding reception, the people are en masse for a period of time, the food served, and they pretty much, half of that or some number of that actually exit the facility and head home. They're more interested in using their private facilities versus public. And so that's how that number came about. We took that generic number and said, hey, we, we believe 50 or maybe 60% will leave after the meal's consumed, and the remaining would be the facility use. So that's where the 125 comes from. It's a 660-gallon-a-day particular number. So the septic system design is associated with that particular number. Yep, that's how we got there.
For 250 people.
Could be. 3,200 square feet. The, typically, the fire marshal will come in and look at the square footage of the building and give a number related to what that occupancy would be seated or standing. Two different numbers.
Yeah, you said the relevancy of it is, they look at the, they measure the square foot by per person. I know that if you look under certain websites, they say that we could have an occupancy from 250 to 400 people. If you include the exterior part of the building per 20 acres, we could have up to 10,000 people sitting on the outside of it, but we're not looking to go quite that big. So.
I don't know.
Yeah, so, yeah. Yep.
General use, business meetings, receptions?
Fundraisers, you know, family reunions.
Customary activities.
Yep.
Nothing out of the ordinary.
Nope.
And I think there was some concern about.
Festivals, stuff like that.
You know, specific, you know, motocross events and that kind of thing, well, high revving engines.
Yeah.
The liability's pretty high for something like that anyway.
Yeah.
And that's beyond our means, so we're, we're not there.
Yep. We're not ever going to be there.
Yeah. Agreed. Any questions from the board?
Any questions? Anybody else like to speak?
We need to open the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Anybody like to speak?
Nobody has signed up on the sign-in sheet. Is anybody would like to speak? Is there anybody online that would like to speak on this application? Okay. Close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Goode?
No, got to make a motion first.
Got to make a motion, yeah.
I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the request by Michael and Helen Roya for the purpose of establishment of a rural events center with the following conditions which they already listed.
I second that, but you wanted to increase the, the occupancy, right?
Don't, don't second that yet, Chair. Can you finish that statement?
Okay.
Now, go ahead.
Yeah. So what do you, what do you request then?
The fire marshal sets the occupancy number, so we'll go to the fire marshal, and the fire marshal can come out and review and set the occupancy.
Okay.
And I'll just, and I'll just add that there's also a condition that says they got to meet the requirements of the health department, so they may have to augment the existing drain field with some porta-potties and stuff, if that's, that's the case, so.
I second that.
So what's?
What, what the fire marshal's proving.
Do you all want to put a number, a max, maximum?
Not to exceed, is that what you're saying?
It's 250?
250.
I was going to say not to exceed 250, let, let the fire marshal end up, let him come back.
All right. Okay. Okay. Good to vote. Okay.
So we need to vote, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Yeah. Patty Cooper, you all?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
All right.
Good luck. Thank y'all.
Next public hearing is a special use permit request from CEP Solar LLC on behalf of Green Bay Solar Farm LLC in a petition to appeal pursuant to 15.22232 of the Code of Virginia. In order to make a determination, the project is substantially in accord with the Prince Edward County Conference of Plan and for the proposal to construct and operate a 5-megawatt acre solar energy facility on land totaling 67.8 plus or minus acres denoted on Tax Map Parcels 107A63 and 107A64 located on Patrick Henry Highway, US Route 360, near its intersection with Chetum Road, State Route 694, which is zoned agricultural conservation. If you'll go to page, applications on page 183 in your packet, pursuant to 15.22316 of the Code of Virginia, the host locality shall schedule a public hearing pursuant to section, subsection A of 15.22204 for the purpose of consideration of such, excuse me, that's the signing agreement. Hold on a second, Mr. Chair. Back to one more second. All right, public hearing notice for this application was published in the May 28 and May 30 additions of the Farmville Herald, and adjacent property owners notified. The purpose of the special use permit is to allow for the location of a solar energy facility. The applicant has stated that the proposed facility will not be seen nor heard and will not impact adjacent properties. Water quality will be addressed according to the Virginia Stormwater Management Permit requirements, and the site will not generate any significant amount of traffic, with the main traffic occurring temporarily during the construction phase of the project. Estimated to be nine months from the start until completion. Planning Commission held a public hearing on March 18 of 2025 where there were letters submitted and citizens that spoke both in favor and support and opposition of the project. Commission deemed the proposal to not be substantially in accord with the Prince Edward County Conference of Plan and recommend denial of the SUP due to the fact that it fosters and or promotes land development in agricultural areas that would have a visual impact of the adjacent roadway and the potential for runoff into an adjacent pond. Since the meeting, the applicant has reconfigured the site plan to locate panels away from the road and has a letter of support from the landowner where the adjacent pond is located, which is included as attachment number five. The applicant filed a petition to appeal pursuant to section 15.22232 of the Code of Virginia. In order to make a determination, the project is substantially in accord with the Prince Edward County Conference of Plan, and that's included as attachment six. And attachment seven is a list of the draft potential conditions as recommended by the staff. With that, I believe CEP, the applicant, would like to make a presentation prior to
Chairman Jenkins and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight about our Green Bay solar project. My name is Don Giesek, and I'm the Director of Permitting Initiatives at CEP Solar. CEP is a Virginia-based small business whose purpose is to partner with landowners, communities, and customers to deliver solar projects that will generate both environmental and economic benefits to our Commonwealth. As Virginians, we take seriously our responsibility to deliver high-quality solar projects. We're grateful for our working relationship with Prince Edward County, and we look forward to delivering a project that you can be proud of. I'm going to take a moment to introduce a couple others from our team who are here tonight. Rick Thomas with Timmons Group provides engineering support, and Karen Cohen with Gentry Lock provides legal support. We've listened carefully to your comments and deliberations, to those from the community, to neighbors, and I would like to introduce Harry Kingery, who will present our redesigned project to you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Don. Good evening. Thanks so much for your time, and I appreciate everyone coming out. So, all right, I'm just going to run through a few project details first, just some kind of high-level bullet points. So this project has a capacity of up to 5 megawatts. Its estimated construction date is in 2027, and estimated to operate for up to 40 years. Related to the land, this is primarily clear-cut timberland. You can see on the photo there in the bottom-left picture to kind of give an image of that. The project will span two private parcels that can also be seen in that image. These two parcels total to about 68 acres. There's about 45 acres that are developable, and since then, we have kind of constrained the project through various conditions that we'll talk about. So there's going to be about less than 30 acres estimated for the solar facility. So there are a lot of factors that go into selecting a site for a solar facility. One of the most important is conformity with the comprehensive plan and compliance with the zoning ordinance. So as has already been stated, the Planning Commission recommended denial for the first version of this project. Also found it not in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and that was for two very specific reasons. That was for what was called aesthetics, so proximity to Route 360, proximity to neighbors, and it was also due to downstream impacts. So there was a lot of conversation about a pond on a neighboring property, and also some conversation about the, the reservoir that's further downstream. So we feel that we have thoroughly resolved these issues, and we'll be talking about and we'll be talking about how we've done that this evening. And I just want to be very clear that we're not asking you to overturn or contradict the Planning Commission. We're just asking for you to consider coming to a different conclusion based on new information, and that new information is the revised site plan, new conditions, kind of evolving neighbor sentiment. So, we got useful feedback at the Planning Commission. We responded, made the project better, and that's how the process is supposed to work. So, this is our original site plan. This is what was presented to the Planning Commission. I just want to note the panels to the south, so you can see 360 kind of going through the bottom-right corner there. The panels between Route 360 and Flipping Creek are the panels that we have removed, so I'm going to do a little back-and-forth here so that we can just see before and after. So, keep your eyes on the panels on the south side of the property. So, since the revisions, we've moved them basically to the north side of Flipping Creek. So, I'll just do that one more time. Okay, so, I'm going to talk through the revised site plan, kind of in the same categories as the Planning Commission. So, related to aesthetics, we moved the panels to the north side of Flipping Creek. That puts them more than 600 feet from Route 360. That's, you know, more than two football fields. And in their place, we have put a timber reserve area. So, we basically, that's that green-hatched area. We're basically committing to grow commercial timber there, just like the property was used before in that area. We are 400 feet from adjacent residences, 400 feet from both Chatham Road and Chatham Forest Road, and there are no neighboring residences with an unobstructed view of the project. So, no one can, you know, sit on the front porch and see panels that'd be looking through trees, or... This is before the buffers even installed. So, that's the aesthetics. Related to downstream impacts, a lot of the concern was for the pond was specific to sediment and erosion control. So, we have reduced the risk of an erosion event. First off, we shrunk the size of the project by about 30%. So, that decreases the potential, you know, disturbed land that we would need to work with. There are a lot of conditions that we have talked through in a few different settings, so we can only disturb 50% of the site at once. So, that's, you know, maximum 15 acres. We're retaining topsoil on site. We are modeling the solar panels as an impervious surface. We've got local oversight in terms of the stormwater management plan. So, there's a lot to reduce the risk of the sediment. The other sort of portion of this is that, as was stated before, we met with Mr. Bailey, and a lot of the concern was on his behalf for his pond, but he has since, since the Planning Commission, has explicitly supported the project. So, I'm just going to read his letter of support here real quick. "It has come to my attention that a Virginia-based company, C E P Solar, has proposed a small solar project on land that is adjacent to a property that I own in Prince Edward County. I have spoken with representatives from C E P, who have been forthcoming about the project's characteristics and benefits that will accrue to the greater community. I'm a firm believer in property rights. Throughout history, the protection of property rights has led to increased economic growth and security, and C E P has expressed their desire to be a good neighbor, and I support the approval of Green Bay Solar." So, that's our neighbor in support of the project. The last thing I'll touch on related to neighbor sentiment is we've gotten verbal support from our neighbor to the north. And if you look at the site plan, he shares, I'd say, most of the property boundary that has solar panels on it. So, he and Mr. Mac Bailey, both in support of the project, both are neighbors that would be closest to it. So, a couple more things on the site plan here. Related to entrances, there's two construction entrances that are proposed off of Chatham Road. They'll be designed in accordance with VDOT requirements. We've got a point of interconnection planned along Route 360. So, this project will connect directly to the distribution lines. No substation needed. And we'll have a buffer planted along Chatham Road to minimize visibility from that right away. Okay, so, let's see. For the next few slides, I'm just going to touch on some kind of bigger-picture topics that have been of interest to the board and various stakeholders. But before I sort of dive into this, I just want to talk about our process for evaluating concerns and responding to them. So, when we learn about or are made aware of a concern for a project, we do research, we evaluate the claims using the best available evidence, and we come away with conclusions and change our development process, if warranted. So, our responses to some of these concerns are highlighted in green. They're often in the form of conditions. And if anyone has a reason to come to different conclusions on these topics, we would love to get together. I've got some business cards. Please reach out. We'd love to compare resources. So, all that being said, this environmental risk assessment slide has to do with the leaching of toxic chemicals or hazardous materials primarily related to Sandy River Reservoir. And we review one resource here, come away with some conclusions. There are many resources that come to similar conclusions. So, this one was performed locally, consolidates a bunch of different, you know, more than 30 scientific studies. And it concludes that there's no risk of leaching of hazardous materials during normal operation or when the solar panels are cracked. So, given these conclusions, there are special-use conditions that adequately address these concerns. So, we have to manage damaged panels. We have to keep them stored appropriately, remove them from the site in a timely manner. There's also soil testing requirements. Excuse me. All right, so, this next slide is related to risk of natural hazards. So, glad to be able to take a second pass at this. This came up in our last meeting. First off, I just want to recognize that it's a, you know, reasonable to be concerned about natural hazards, inclement weather, like tornadoes, hail, given all the news that has been circulating recently. The big takeaway from this slide is that the risk of those events in Prince Edward County specifically are low, according to the FEMA National Risk Index. Also, according to the NOAA Storm or Event Database, there has been two tornadoes that have touched down in Prince Edward County in the past 75 years. There have been two hail events of greater than two inches in diameter in the past 75 years. And that's just to hit the county. That's not factoring in the fact that solar is a fraction of a percentage of the county. So, the message is this. The risks from these events are objectively low in Prince Edward County. And all that being said, we still want to be responsive to this concern. So, we added a natural disaster preparation requirement to our emergency response plan. We've added supplemental insurance coverage, and the emergency response plan will include roles and responsibilities, emergency contacts, procedures that are to take place, you know, in succession after the inclement weather event. And there will be a team that is ready to respond quickly to clean up any situations that may occur. I've also been in touch with Prince Edward's Emergency Response Coordinator, Mr. Trey Pyle, and we're going to continue to coordinate on this effort. So, my last slide here, related to kind of big-picture topics, is about solar panel recycling. So, I'm just going to pass this out. This wasn't included in our packet, but just handing out a copy right now. There should be maybe one more than you guys need there. There's been an interest in the viability of solar panel recycling, specifically where they can be recycled. So, this is a map of recycling facilities that accept solar panels, mostly based on the Solar Energy Industry Association's National Recycling Program. They're listed on a table on the back. There's also a list of domestic manufacturers that have committed to taking their panels back at the end of their useful life. That includes Solarix, which is Virginia's first manufacturer, solar panel manufacturer in Bedford County. So, this is just examples of a broader message that panel recycling is increasingly viable. Private businesses are making investments. Lawmakers are seeing needs in passing legislation, and panel recycling will grow proportionately to the amount of panels that reach the end of life. All right, so last few slides here. We've, as Don mentioned, we've done a lot of community outreach for this project. We had our first community meeting in December. More recently, we hosted a neighborhood meeting on-site, got the weed whacker out to, you know, so that we aren't standing around in knee-high grass. And it was really productive. We met a couple of neighbors who are in support of the project verbally. They said they're just glad that a, you know, that a subdivision isn't being proposed. We met with one neighbor who came out in opposition at the Planning Commission meeting. He has since changed his mind and no longer opposes the project. So, this goes to show, we've made significant changes, and the neighbors are noticing. And based on these conversations, I don't believe that there's a neighbor that lives at a residence next to the facility that is in opposition. So, this slide, I won't go through all these. We've pretty much covered them all already. But I just want you all to recognize, there are concerns, and there's a response in the form of conditions, site design changes. These are those conditions categorized and listed out. Just wanted to make that very clear. And then my last couple slides here. This project provides economic benefits beyond just tax revenue. There's a one-time pulse of activity during construction, sustained activity during operations. And last but not least, just the revenue comparison. So, we've estimated that over the life of the project, these properties will produce $700,000 in local tax revenue compared to $25,000 without solar. So, all in all, this facility is going to quietly generate affordable electricity and emission-free electricity, won't burden county resources, and it will responsibly add to the tax base of the county. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Can we go back to the before and after?
Sure.
There's the before.
Is it still going to be a five-megawatt by taking all those up?
Yep, so we've applied for an up-to-five-megawatt project. So, we shrunk the project size by about 30% and we build in some factors. There's some design considerations that you can change, the spacing of the panels, the type of the racking system to squeeze more capacity into a smaller area. So, we're still aiming for a five-megawatt project.
Did this come back before the planning commission again, or just?
One time.
Just one, just not just one?
That's correct.
One question I have for you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
For a pond that's right there on Mac Bailey's property. He has said that he has no problem with it. Does, do you all have any projects with Mac right now?
No, we don't.
Because he is pro-solar, so therefore, that seems a little bit of a conflict of interest there that he would be for this, that he would ever be against it, since he's sold land for it.
We've never worked with Mac. I've heard Mr. Bailey. I have heard that he has had some other projects.
Several, several large-scale.
Yeah.
My concern when we headed it to the planning commission was runoff into his pond. And, you know, we have to be cautious because he does do a lot of agricultural work. We do not want to damage a water source.
Well, if there's any runoff there, of course, it goes to Sandy River from there.
Right.
Which is the project that we're spending money on right now.
Yeah, so, if I can just speak to that briefly.
Sure.
It sounds like, yeah, there's concern about sediment in the runoff, right? I'll just go back to our original site plan here. So, these, or sorry, the parcel map. These parcels have already been clear-cut, and there are very different rules for what companies that are clear-cutting have to do compared to what we have to do.
Correct.
So, if we're concerned about a change of land use affecting the flow into this pond, then that change of land use has already happened. You know, close to worst-case scenario. So, removing the vegetation, not a lot of erosion and sediment control. We have to play by different rules. We have to maintain water quality and quantity pre- and post-development. So, yeah, it's a... And again, we've added conditions. We've done our research. These are based on the best available practices out of academia and from engineering groups. So, I can understand the concern on behalf of Mr. Bailey, but again, it's his pond, and he's confident that we're going to be a good neighbor, we're going to be a good steward of the land, and he won't be negatively impacted.
Correct. Let me be very clear. I wasn't concerned about Mac's pond or his water. I'm concerned about Sandy River Reservoir. Not about the sediment, but about if-if, and I will say if at this point. If there's anything that was to get damaged and run into it, it runs into Sandy River. The sediment doesn't bother me. Well, the Mac's pond fills up, doesn't bother me. I know Mac very well personally, so I can say that. But if the pond fills up with sediment, that doesn't bother me. It's if there's anything in those panels or anything else that were to get in Sandy River. That's my issue.
Yeah, and again, I understand that. That's why I touched on that environmental risk assessment. So, the conclusion from industry and many other groups is that these panels do not leach hazardous materials. They definitely don't do it while they're operating normally. There's very, very little risk, even when they're cracked. The, if you read this risk assessment, they basically have to shred these panels up into, you know, centimeter-sized debris and soak them in acidic water in order to extract any of the materials out of them. So, that's not a realistic scenario in the field, and it's particularly not realistic here since we have these requirements around damaged panel management and storage, and we're covered with those conditions.
Not to belabor the point very much, but this is a new technology, and there's a lot of things that we don't know about technology, such as lead and gasoline, which everyone, even the government, said wouldn't bother you, but we found out that that didn't work, so they took it out. Mr. Bailey happened to be in an industry that was highly regulated that said nicotine wasn't a problem or whatever else, but each and every person that's here today, if you had anybody die with lung cancer or anything else, you'll see that to be different. So, with that said, it's hard to say from a new project or perspective or whatever else that it's not, that it can't, that it's not damaged or whatever else. But that's just my point.
Yeah, yeah. And I agree with you that, I would say, the scale of this use of solar is new. The technology itself has been around for quite some time. So, we, you know, we understand very well what it is capable of, and it's been in use for decades in some instances. So, but I do understand your concern, and I hope that we've addressed it with our added conditions.
Mr. Chairman, we're ready for public hearing.
We'd like to have Brian Staffler, Stepper. That's a... Tell us your name and where you live at. Tell us your name and where you live at.
Brian Staffen, 6038 Patrick Henry Highway, Maheron Lee District. I'm a skeptic of solar and also those with a vested interest in this project. I can't predict the future, but I do have strongly-held beliefs. And solar has been around for a long time, but not with this configuration. Gallium, cadmium, and arsenic. We know the risks of these elements individually, but what are the risks in panels? I can't find anything about solar panel dangers, but does that mean they're safe because there's nothing in the literature? Reducing the risk does not mean that there is no risk. What's the long-term danger to Sandy Creek Reservoir and the Appomattox and the people in these areas? What is the voice of approval for the people at Sandy Creek Reservoir and the Appomattox? And I believe a lot of PhDs and scientists spoke of the safety of nuclear energy, but look at what happened at Three Mile Island. The literature says it was an equipment malfunction and human error. These were not foreseen. Who would have thought that a failed bearing would have resulted in the problems at East Palestine, Pennsylvania? That was a simple problem, but look at the ramifications. Engineers designed the bridge at the University of Miami, the pedestrian bridge, but a math error that went unrecognized by the design firm and by the consulting firm that reviewed it led to the collapse of the pedestrian bridge before it was ever put into use, and people died there. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Staffen?
Yep.
Ohio.
Good evening, board. We're not going to drag this horse into the mud bath so many times. I know their property well, and they've cut it back. If you go back to where they revived it, put all the panels more on the north side, you can't walk it. It's a hill, a major hill. So they can tell you all they want, that water is just going to the pond right now. If you drive by it, it's a mud bath from just normal rain alone. So go on stacking panels even more to the north side. How they plan to put them in, because it is a major hill going to Flipping Creek, goes to the pond, right on down to Sandy River, and it's not that far to the Sandy River reservoir. You can't stop it, okay? So you're going to have some major erosion just to start, and then, God forbid, something does happen to the panels. And based to the reservoir that Farmville needs, y'all got some issues. I just hope that the board is not selling their souls to the devil, because he will collect sooner or later.
Thank you.
Good evening, board.
Good evening, sir.
I want to encourage you to vote yes for this project. Obviously, I have a vested interest in this. I'm a part-owner of the property there. I say vote yes because the CEP has voted, they have modified the setbacks and addressed the water issues that were addressed, or talked to them at the planning commission. Also, this project is a small-scale solar project, and it will help to diversify the tax base for this county and lift the tax burden off of the citizens here. I can speak from where I'm from, which y'all probably know, some of y'all know where I'm, Notaway County. And Notaway County's gone up 20%, 20%, two years on their real estate taxes, not including a $20 million courthouse that they're mandated by the judge to build. The, all the counties here, I grew up here, I've been in Chesterfield 30 years, and I come back here a lot. We still have our family home. Population stayed the same, but the population's getting older. But your facilities for your county and your, everything that's required of the government is still the same and going up, as evidenced where I'm from, Notaway County, Burkeville. And they're caught in a jam over there. And if you want to attract businesses, you would want to have, this helps to attract business. You have downstairs that you want to get the, one of the data centers. And one of the things a lot of people looking for is they want to see that you have solar here, some kind of diversity in your economy. There's been a farming economy. I grew up here, obviously. But looking back from where I'm there 30 years ago, coming back here 40 years ago, there's no, the farm has dried up. Things have changed a lot. And it used to be grocery stores, no grocery stores. Farmville's the only place that's really growing that I see. So I would say vote yes for this. It's a risk to everything. If nobody took any risk anywhere, you would never do anything. I would also want to point out, the last meeting, I think it was, I think it was at the last meeting on another project, there was pointed out that the tax, the electric customers are being charged on their riders for solar projects. I also want to pull out, you're being charged to clean up coal ash cleanup, especially down there where I'm at in Chesterfield. You've got fleets of dump trucks moving coal ash that's leaking out of the coal ponds, going in James River, or bike going to James River. They have to move it on the other side over there. They're afraid to move it everywhere else because it's heavy metals everywhere. The risk for this is nowhere near what that is. I say vote yes for this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening to all.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with the folks' family concerning their project here. Their family goes back to the 1700s in Virginia. They're well-known, they own land in several counties, and they're good stewards of their properties. You could not ask for a better neighbor or a friend. These are the kind of people who reach out to those around them and welcome them into their projects or trying to include them. I wish I had neighbors as good as that. The developer is established and reputable. Their project will be well-designed and executed properly. I also speak as someone who has worked with several solar projects from a landowner perspective for over 10 years. I continue to learn and research for opportunities for our land moving forward for the next generation or maybe more generations. I firmly believe in private property rights for all, but some landowners are being denied opportunities for solar development. John Adams, who was our second president and the principal author of our constitution, wrote, "Private property rights must be secure, or liberty does not exist." This is a good project and deserves to move forward. I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, board, for your time. I haven't taken the time before to thank you for your service, because that's important. And it's a lot of time on your part just to spend listening to people like me. So I thank you. So this project has been thoroughly reworked since it was presented to the planning commission, as the CEP has stated. And we have personally worked with the neighbors and with CEP on this project and the other projects, because we are involved and we care. And we do care that we don't want pollution, we don't want problems with this project or any of our projects, and we want to see Prince Edward County progress. And this is, this is an industrial-type thing that will give you income for many years. Also, the energy from this project is put onto the distribution line, it's actually used locally. It's used by the neighbors. And that's all I have to say. Thank you much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, sir.
Board, how y'all?
Good evening.
I live on Mount Pleasant Road, have lived there 78 years. We were a dairy farmer, and now we're a beef farmer. And I'm not involved in this project at all, but there have been some things said I would like to, you know, count after that. One thing, somebody had said the noise from the solar panels when they adjust. Well, this is Green Bay. They have 360 there with log trucks, and they have a train track with hundreds of train cars hauling coal and toward the coast. And from the coast, they haul containers back. And I live three miles myself from the train track. Sometimes it sounds like they're in my backyard, so I don't think noise is an issue. And then people talk about timber. Timber grows, you cut the timber, it comes back. You cut the timber, you plant crops. Solar is like a crop. Crops use the sun to get their nutrition from. Tows need solar to make the grass grow. The sun helps corn and wheat. So solar, you're using the sun, which we'll never end. It's clean, it's always there. Prince Edward County needs to use it. They have talked about sediment basins and all, and I'm sure they're adequate, and if need be, they can be adjusted to solve any problem as far as erosion and sediment. I have had back surgery, and I've been watching television. I watched the education station, PBS, and I saw a program on solar research, similar to Virginia Tech. I don't remember what state, Midwestern state. And they found no empirically toxic leakage from the panels. They have experimented with new panel heights to where cattle can graze underneath them, where this is something new. They are raising vegetables with drip irrigation underneath the panels. And this new process is not called solar farm. It is called solar farming, which utilizes the sun in the panels and raising farm products underneath, including foods, vegetables underneath the panels. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. Thank you for allowing me to come up and speak. I'm pro-solar. I live in Lee District. My address is Maheron, Mount Pleasant Road. So I'm a couple of miles from the farm that's being proposed this time. But I see that the solar community has redone what the commission has asked them about, what's been questioned by this board about, and is trying to be considerate of everybody's concerns and work with you as best they can. And it's to their benefit to be good neighbors and not to cause problems in the neighborhood, because they've got a reputation, they want to make a profit. They're also eager to be a good neighbor to all of us, to produce clean energy for us. The demand for energy is going to grow and grow. This has been a progressive county. We've been working for water sources and different things to invite industry and to improve our county for our residents, and the income, tax income, will be greatly appreciated by all of us taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Good evening. David Jennings, I'm here on behalf of my mother, Judy Jennings. She's a neighboring landowner here in opposition to the project. You know, a couple of thoughts here. You know, the planning commission ruled against it based on it not being substantially in accord with the comprehensive land concept. And I understand some of that was in the works. You know, what does that mean exactly? Is that 51% in compliance? Does that meet the criteria if it only affects 51% of the neighbors? You know, is that something that we really want to approach voting for? Rather than learn by trial-by-error means and learn from mistakes, it's better to be proactive on these projects and stay ahead of them and be more conservative in the meantime, and figure out what the residents really prefer as far as that goes. I think everybody's all learning it together, the board, the residents, everybody's kind of in this at the same time, figuring out where we stand. You know, right now, there's a provision in there related to a 75-foot buffer. You know, the county, you could be more aggressive on that type of stipulation, you know, a 200-foot buffer. It could be something where it could be required that it has a significant height and things of that nature. I draw a comparison. About 15 years ago, I worked for a Farm Service Agency, and I was a farm loan officer for the county. And I was a loan officer for counties adjoining Prince Edward as well. And so in Cumberland, they had a project that was on 13. It was a solar project, and you'd ride by it, and it was an entrance. You'd see it, you'd ride by, you'd be more intrigued, but you couldn't see it. And even looking down in there, you still couldn't see it. So it was kind of a point of fascination as opposed to a point of concern, or what is this going to do to neighboring land, you know, neighboring properties? Because it was buried back in there a long ways, it didn't affect anybody. It's in the middle of a big track of timber that, you know, over time, basically wouldn't impact anyone far off the road. You know, in my opinion, if you drive by and it draws attention, gives you concerns, then it's affecting the neighbors. If the planning commission finds that it's not in accord, revising the plan shouldn't seem like the option, abandoning the location seems like the option. Concessions by the solar entity should not be deemed as a, you know, a show of goodwill. This is a business transaction. You know, they're doing what they have to do in order to advance the cause. I know this because I was one of the three that met on the site, and I met with this gentleman here, and I believe earlier he mentioned that I had changed my position on that, but that was not the case. And so I was concerned to hear that. I was one of the ones that spoke in opposition during the planning commission meeting. I guess I understand some of the supervisors have visited the site. Those of you that have visited it or others that have ridden by it, when you stood there, if, you know, when you looked across there and you saw, you envisioned solar panels at that location, you know, did it seem like that was a natural fit as far as that location? Was there anything else around the property that made you feel like that is the proper location for that to be there? If you lived beside it, would you want to look at that for the next 30 years? Make it a point that on these properties, you can still see the panels from there. And if we went out there right now, if I stood there or if I stood there, and someone else stood on that hillside where the panels were to be located, we could wave at each You know, as a kind of a point of reference, I have a six- and seven-year-old son, we could bring him up here and we could show them the map of the proposed project, and they could play the game, which one of these is not like the other. I think they would be able to figure it out pretty easily. As a point of notice, last night I read in the Blackstone Courier Record that there was a land conveyance in Lunenburg County like last week, last that there was a land conveyance in Lunenburg County like last week, last month, maybe, solar company to solar company. The total transactions were about $14 million. So if we're not proactive on managing these companies coming in and placing these in different locations, there's not much money privately or individual citizens that can really work against that size money in the county. Barely county money could fight something like that. When there's enough money involved, there's a way that they can impose their will, so to speak. So, you know, I advocate for the county to be very aggressive on managing these. And this one right here adjacent to residential tracks, it doesn't fit. If you were to locate it back in the middle of these large, many thousand acres of timberland or whatever the case, nobody's going to visit for the next 50 years in the first place, that's different. Something the county does have is it has lots being cut up. It has houses being built, has lots being sold along the roads. You locate one right in the middle of a location that's affected by that, that doesn't seem like that would be collectively in the interest of the community. So I urge you to oppose the project.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. My question is, how close are you? Are you on the same side as where that solar farm is?
We're right here, so.
Are you on the opposite side of the road?
This is my grandfather's farm. He bought it in 1954. So when we come out, we come out and we cross the road and we're looking at it when we come out the driveway.
During winter, when leaves are off of trees, everything's more visible. This time of year, when leaves are green periodically, you know, it's, certain things are less visible. But I understand they're going to leave that to regrow naturally or whatever the case is. But, you know, as we discussed, as somebody mentioned earlier, timber is temporary. You understand that it comes and goes. So, I mean, you'll be revisiting it.
So what road, what's your name of your road?
Highway 360.
Well, I know 360. You east or west?
We're right here. It's a Quirrell Drive.
Southside.
Southeast side of 360.
You need a Jenkins place?
I'm Judy Jennings.
Oh, you live in the Jenkins.
I do. So I live on the farm over there.
I got you.
I'll talk with you in the driveway one day.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have Jody Hopgood.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Jody Hopgood. I live in Lee District. How was the storms last Friday night in Green Bay? Lots of storms. Farmville, Green Bay, Maran, lots of storms had happened. So when I go through Green Bay Saturday morning, there's trees down. Lots of trees down, water in the road. Electric company's out fixing the power. Some of my friends had trees on their houses. Behind their houses, had no power. So we had a massive storm. So I just want to make it known that in Texas, when there's hailstorms, especially Needville, Texas, they had a bad hailstorm. They took away their solar panels. They demolished them. And they sat for a very long time. And they dripped things out into the soil. So if you look at how you're going to get rid of those solar panels, it's maybe about, no places in Virginia to get rid of the solar panels. There's about five or six places in Texas. But there's some places in Texas that the solar panels are sitting, waiting for the county to do something with them. And it's costing billions of dollars for the county. And I want to quote, I was looking at the Farmville Herald about this meeting. And in the quote, it said, "The solar panel company wasn't really sure where they were going to buy their solar panels from to place them here in Green Bay." So something's not quite right. I oppose no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
Anybody online that wishes to speak on this application?
Can we have a motion?
I move that the board of supervisors approve the siting agreement with Green Bay Solar Farm.
Under the special use.
One second, please. Okay. I move that the board of supervisors find that the Green Bay Solar Farm LLC proposed 5-megawatt solar energy facility, as described in the special use permit application, as said proposal has been revised by the applicant is substantially in accord with the Prince Edward County Comprehensive Plan and approve the request for a special use permit with the following conditions.
Just want to reference the conditions in the packet, madam.
And the conditions are referenced in the package.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion in the board number? Mr. Emmett?
I'm a no.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Ms. Peggy Cooper?
Yes.
I'm yes. Mr. Watson?
I would just say that I want to remind people when somebody referenced Notaway County and the struggles that we all have, we have to approve what we think is almost ridiculous expenditures every time, every time. I mean, it costs a lot of money to do things. We have 20% of the population in our county below the poverty line. To say no to money coming into a small project. I live not near that community, admittedly. But I talk regularly to people who are in the scientific field at Longwood and Hampton City. They are not in fear of these projects. The fact that we did not go back to the planning commission, I would prefer that. But I will vote in favor of this.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Should we go?
No.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, next public hearing, which is on page 183. So the county has been in negotiations with Green Bay Solar Farm LLC for a siting agreement related to construction operation of a 5-megawatt solar facility on land totaling 67.8 plus or minus acres, as referenced in the previous special use permit public hearing pursuant to section 15.22316-8B of the Code of Virginia. The host locality shall schedule a public hearing pursuant to subsection A of 15.22204. For the purposes of consideration of such siting agreement, if a majority of the quorum of the members of the board present at such public hearing approve of such siting agreement, the siting agreement shall be executed by the signatures of the chief executive officer of the host locality and the applicant or the applicant's authorized agent. The siting agreement shall continue in effect until it is amended, revoked, or suspended. Public hearing was published in the May 28 and May 30 additions of the Farmville Herald. It's included in attachment three and adjacent property owners were notified. The agreement for the 5-megawatt solar site include a one-time upfront voluntary payment of $112,500 or $22,500 per megawatt acre, plus an annual payment of $1,540 per megawatt acre as proffered by the applicant for a total estimated taxable revenue of $561,587. And with that, we have no one that has signed up. Mr. Chair, please open the hearing.
I'm going to move that the board of supervisors.
We just opened. Nobody signed up. Is anyone here wishes to speak on this application? Anybody online that wishes to speak on the application? You get to close it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Should we go to Emmett?
I make a motion that the board approves a siting agreement, Green Bay Solar Farm LLC for the purposes of 5-megawatt solar energy facility.
I'll second.
That's the money. Motion in the second.
One quick, just a question. That's 1,400 per megawatt.
So they actually have, the 1,400 to the state, they actually bumped it to 1,540. So they're paying $140 year one higher than what the code requirement is for siting agreement.
But is that per megawatt generated or what is proposed?
It is per megawatt generated. That's correct.
So it's based on the capacity of the project. So this project is proposed at 5 megawatts. And it's independent of how much energy is generated. So energy generation can fluctuate. You all still get the same revenue payments.
So 5 megawatts is going to pay 5 times 1,450 or 1,540, correct?
Yeah.
Seventy-five, $7,700 a year.
And that's indexed to go up every five years, I believe, as part of the agreement?
Yep.
10% every five years. Just wondered if it was what was generated or what was proposed.
You have a motion and a second, Mr. Chair.
Should we go to Emmett?
I'm going to say yes on the siting agreement.
Yes.
Should we go to Peggy Cooper?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Should we go to Watson?
I'll also say something I forgot to say just now. Our departed colleague, Bobby Jones, we served on the planning commission together. And when he would have a high temperature room, and he was good at this and he was legit, it was earnest as it can be. He would say, hey, we're usually in favor of stuff, but we want to protect you from it if you don't like it. And that's what we're going to vow to do too. And that's important. That's a big part of this stuff. I vote yes to that.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Should we go?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
All right. The next public hearing, which is on page 205 of your packet. At the April 29, 2025 board meeting, the board authorized public hearing for the attached proposed ordinance, which was able to board to authorize the payment of a one-time bonus payment equal to 1.5% of the employee's base salary on July 1 of 2025. As the board is aware, the FY '26 county budget includes a 1.5% one-time bonus for all county employees and officers, to include those not covered by the comp board and both full and part-time staff. In accordance with section 15.2508 of the Code of Virginia as amended, the bonus must be approved by ordinance, which requires public hearing. Public hearing notice was published in the May 28 and 30th editions of the Farmville Herald. The approximate cost of the 1.5% bonus is $110,030, of which we will be reimbursed $48,215 from the comp board for those state offices that will be covered. Happy to answer any questions or if you want, just open the public hearing, Mr. Chair.
Open the public hearing. Anybody have anything to say, Bill? Nope. You're closed, probably here.
I'm going to move that the board approve the ordinance as presented, authorize a one-time bonus to eligible county employees, officers, in accordance with the action of Virginia General Assembly.
Second. Do we have a person opening the second? Should we go?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Should we go to Watson?
Yes.
Jenkins, yes. Should we go to Peggy Cooper?
Yes.
Should we go to Townsend?
Yes.
Should we go to Emmett?
Yes.
Our sixth and final public hearing. Apologies to our interim superintendent. The board has received a request from Prince Edward County School Board requesting $1,039,101.50 of local carryover funds. And that's from the FY '24 budget to pay for adding security fencing in the Prince Edward County Elementary School and primarily for the renovation of the auditorium at the Prince Edward County High School. The board of supervisors will wish to approve and appropriate the funds requested following public hearing to amend the FY '25 county and school budgets by that amount. Per section 50.22507 of the Code of Virginia, locality may amend its budget during the fiscal year. However, if such amendment exceeds the currently adopted expenditures by 1% or more, locality must advertise the amendment at least seven days prior to the public hearing. The county's currently approved FY '25 budget is currently $75,470,373, which means they exceed the 1% threshold. So with that, Chairman, I'd ask you, open the public hearing.
Anybody want to speak going in? Okay. I'll be here as the speaker's over. And now we'll move on to, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. We go, should we go?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Should we go to Watson?
Yes.
Jenkins is yes?
Yes.
Peggy Cooper? Should we go to Townsend?
Yes.
Should we go to Emmett?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Got the money, didn't have to say a thing.
The whole column does the perfect lame duck situation.
Mr. Chair, this is the last opportunity we'll have to see interim superintendent Cox. I just want to thank you, Joe, for all you've done.
Thank you so much.
Take care of yourself.
Thank you, Dr. Cox.
Come back.
Not in that position.
Not necessarily to sit through all of this, but just to visit.
Okay, we'll move on to highway matters.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, I believe that Mr. Frederick is in Cumberland tonight. So I'll be happy to record any highway issues and we will relay those to him.
When are you going to get to cut the grass on the side of my area?
When man, when man.
Is that secondaries and primaries? We can ask him if he can provide.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be.
Updated schedule.
Yeah, the grass cutting schedule.
Oh, I know also I want to say something about B-Dot. Those road markers, mile markers, look good.
Oh, right, I haven't seen them yet.
You have a sense of pride about that, don't you?
It looked really good.
You should.
You been there 360 east or westbound?
Not yet, I will.
Tomorrow.
I'm telling you, don't they look real good? You have it. I'm telling you, devil's son, I just wanted to let B-Dot know that they really, really appreciate it because it stands out and it could save someone life. That's what our response time for EMS, et cetera. So I want to thank, make that note for Scott. And the board for agreeing to do it because they had to come up with some money to pay for it. The science wasn't expensive, but just the installation was the cost.
Yeah, there won't be any ambiguity about somebody who's stuck somewhere. He'll know exactly where they are.
Quickly identify where they are. So I appreciate that.
Sir, just let me know about all the potholes everywhere on the secondaries. Having a lot of people complaining about it.
Anywhere in particular that I can direct?
Old Prospect Road. I'll get over to Lou's district with Singleton. Singleton is literally all the pieces down where the spring comes out in the loop, or it was yesterday. I hate saying, I hate saying, but Oliver.
Down near the spring?
Oliver Road is also.
Same place.
That's correct, same place. Hard Times and Oliver both.
Oliver?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll take Oliver. I'm going to let Lou take the heat for Hard Times. That's his part on the odd.
I got my list.
We'll start it with Height School Road.
Yep.
1449. There's a dead pine tree that has fell out of the woods, overhanging the road. And there's been enough trucks going by to knock some limbs off. Somebody needs to cut that one off.
Okay.
And it's too high for a fire department to get up out of this hole. Let's see, the next one is 2205 Fire Force Road. Half of a oak tree has fallen down. And they cut just enough off the limb to get by. But if somebody was to run out the road right there, it would be bad. They need to finish cutting that thing and get it back off the road. More of them. Where they filled the ditch in and washed it last time with crush run. All of their crush run is now in the creek. They need to get some larger stone. That hill is very steep. I don't know whether number threes will do it or not, but I would knock the crush run back. I'm gonna get over in Bill's neck of the woods now.
Oh, wait, let me just...
Come on over here.
Now in the creek, need larger stuff.
Same place as last time. High Bridge Road. The limbs are so bad and the grass is so bad, me and a male man just about ran into each other the other day. Really needs to be cut back. And I got one more, but I was driving and trying to write it, and I can't read it. I'll think of another call. Thank you.
Wish more texting like you.
He says, tell, tell Scott to give me a call, because I didn't mention High Bridge Road to him and Precipentary Fork Road to him and, uh, there's two, three more. Just tell him to give me a call so I can get with him and ride around, or he can ride with me so I can show him where these spots are. He can follow me.
I'm gonna get back in David's neck of the woods then.
Yeah, I was going.
I come up wrong. Road between Five Forks and Prospect, can't think of, bring it up.
Heno.
Hendricks Grove, we're going back toward Prospect, go down here around the curve. Somebody was kind enough to pick up all the trash. Them bags have been laying there for months. They might have to fade through and split open.
Is it, um, is it north of Hendricks Store or?
North.
North of Hendricks Store?
It's, it actually starts on Old Prospect Road because they just split open with the rain as of yesterday and washed.
Okay, so the, these are, are these orange? This is like an adopted highway pickup?
They just evidently missed them.
Okay.
Did anybody?
Dr. Pratt's being awful quiet.
I'll let you leave, Miss Pratt.
No, just that grass cutting is just, it's bad.
I'm not going to take up for VDOT, but I think the late tree removal for the ice storms has pushed back their mowing by a few weeks. So hopefully, we'll get you updated schedule.
And I will say, if you have, I know the crossover where my mom is, whenever you pull into that crossover and are going westbound, that grass can, can obstruct your sight distance. So if you know of a place like that, if we identify that for VDOT, they will send somebody out pretty immediately. So let us know if you, if you recognize a sight distance issue.
Hey, Sarah, I know Rice Creek, I think it's the next road to be tarred, scheduled to be tarred and gravel, or one of them. I think it's the next. But I freaking getting quite a few calls from the constituents out there. You know, maybe ask, talk to Scott, see if they can get out there and do something. Grading or doing something so they can see, so the citizens, the constituents can see something occurring out there with their roads.
Is, is the road condition in the unpaved section is really rough?
It is. It is. It probably needs, your, your trees need, limbs need trimming back. But I think if they see some activity out there, then they're more reconfirmed that, um, because what I'm telling them is what Scott told me. It'll be completed before cold weather. But, you know, that's nor here, there, but I think if they can see some activity occurring, that may relieve some of that anxiety. And, uh, don't think I'm lying. That's the bottom line.
It's like a professional wrestler getting ready to get out.
Proved that they had cutting on back Hamilton Road?
Yes, sir.
I liked that machine, and it did a nice job. It hasn't been that good in years. They need to keep them folks on every road that they can keep on.
Was this a contract crew?
Yes.
A contract crew? Okay.
I mean, it did a nice job.
Sarah, one more, which is over Lou's, Lou's district, just because I went down it yesterday, um, Bethlehem, not Bethlehem. Put beneath the dirt road where Mike Lewis lives.
Um, church, Monroe Church?
No, that's Buffalo Church.
Buffalo Church, Bethlehem's all I can have in my mind. Buffalo, Buffalo Church Road.
You ought to know better than to go down that way.
I didn't have, didn't have much choice because I hung up, but anyway, the, the ditches are actually better than they used to be, but the road is, is washboard like truck and trailer, it'll run you out of it.
Basically going down to the, exactly where I was turned. Does anybody? Okay. You want to go here with a citizen volunteer?
Yes, sir, thank you. I will turn everyone's attention to your table pack. We had a couple of, um, of applications come in after the board pack was completed. So the, the summary on, in your table pack represents all of the applications received. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone saw the most recent it, um, list of applicants.
So what you need, we're going to do this all-inclusive, one vote?
That's, um, that's up to you. The, the first two positions, you have more applicants than you have, um...
Positions.
Vacancies, yes, yes, sir. So you will, you will have to make a decision there. The, um, the ones after that, starting with social services and on down, I believe that in each of those, the incumbent has reapplied, except, the planning commission was an actual vacancy.
All incumbents have reapplied except for Ken. I would make a motion that we reappoint all incumbents and then Ken Copeland.
That sounds like a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, keep yourself.
I'll second.
Okay. All right. Boo, boo. Okay, with him?
Yes.
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 I'm a yes. This what?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two about Gillum?
Yes.
Okay. So now we have the finance and human resources.
I think I need to read a disclosure, because I was absent when you went on fifteen A. I got a disclosure for fifteen A. As a member, as a member of the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors, I jury talented to disclose that I have a personal interest in the transaction on the agenda item fifteen A. Appropriations for the fiscal year twenty-six county budget on the June tenth, twenty twenty-five board agenda. My wife is an employee of the Prince Edward County Public Schools, and I am an employer of the Piedmont Regional Jail, both of which are funded in the fiscal year twenty-six county budget. And according to section two point two dash three, one, one, two, B, one of the Code of Virginia, I'm able to participate in the discussion and vote on this agenda item, both objectively and in the public interest. As the county budget affects a group of more than three employees of the schools and the Piedmont Regional Jails, I have filed a declaration of disclosure with the clerk of the board of supervisors, a copy of which is available for public view, review.
On April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, the board of supervisors approved the FY twenty-six budget for Prince Edward County. The resolution adopted on that date listed a total budget of one hundred and twenty-seven million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars, which included a school budget of thirty-three million, fourteen thousand dollars and eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, and a school cafeteria budget of one million, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. While the board approved the FY twenty-six budget, funds cannot be expended until appropriated. Attachment one is the annual resolution of appropriation, which empowers the county officers to expend and manage funds in accordance with the policies contained in the resolution. Attachment two provides the specific amounts to be appropriated by department or fund.
Can, can we do that in the sheriff's brokerage at the same time? Is that separate?
I'd rather do them individually, I think.
So moved for the progress for the county budget.
Second.
Okay. Two about Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two about Watson?
Yes.
And Jenkins, yes. Two about Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Two about Townsend?
Yes.
Two about Emmett?
I'm a yes, okay.
Thank you. The next item is fifteen B appropriations for the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department received a thousand dollar donation from Wawa for Lieutenant Sprague's participation in the Hoagies for Heroes Hoagie Building Competition during the recent grand opening, and a two hundred and fifty dollar donation from Project Lifesaver. The board is asked to appropriate the funds as listed below.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Should I go?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two about Watson?
Yes.
Jenkins says yes. Two about Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Two about Emmett?
Yes.
And two about Townsend?
Yes.
Okay.
Next item is fifteen C IT data backup system. Pursuant to the procurement policy, Sean Howard, IT director, solicited three bids to upgrade the county's antiquated data backup process. The objective is to approve our process to current standards, ensuring government continuity in the event of catastrophic loss due to natural disasters, severe server crash, malware, or et cetera. IT Noble was the mid-tier offer that provided the best value of security and reliability for cloud backup and disaster recovery with infinite data retention. The board is asked to approve the total proposal of twenty-five thousand, sixty-five dollars for a three-year term. The cost covers the annual subscription and maintenance fee and a one-time installation fee and shipping.
You have a motion?
I move that the board of supervisors approve the proposal from IT Noble totaling twenty-five thousand, sixty-five dollars for a three-year term.
That's second. Two about Emmett?
Yes.
Two about Townsend?
Yes.
Two about Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins says yes. Two about Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two about Gillum?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then we have public safety committee. Mr. Dan?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, public safety committee met on Monday, June second at lunch. Committee comprises supervisors Townsend, Jenkins, and Gillum. Committee brings the following recommendations to the board for action. As the board is aware, the discussion of consolidating the nine-one-one center and the sheriff's office dispatch has been ongoing for about two years, and I'll say issues have been long before that. Committee has reviewed the dispatch efficiencies and radio system savings that would occur from consolidation, particularly right now when we're talking about buying new equipment as part of the radio system upgrade, and the fact that the, um, the town PD has the ability to get a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant if they go to consolidate. Committee reviewed the dispatch efficiencies, radio system savings. Met again with the sheriff on June second, recommends to the board, A, approval of the creation of a joint emergency communication center. B, authorize the board chair and county administrator execute a joint communication center agreement. There's a draft agreement in your packet.
We still got to...
I'll say hammer out a few last things with the town. And authorize the FY twenty-five budget supplement in the, um, and I guess, it's a question.
Cheryl, should that be an FY twenty-six supplement? Since we're, it won't be occurring till next year. But I guess we get twenty-five, we can carry it forward, so we'll, we'll do that. An amount of two hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-eight, seven cents from fund balance, and authorize the transfer of sixty-nine thousand, three eighty-three, seventy-seven from the sheriff's salary and wages to emergency joint nine-one-one communications center line item. That actually is a FY twenty-six. I'm going to make that call right now. It's got to be next year's budget because that's where the money's in. So we just adopted the budget. Now we could, it's our first amendment. I think it's the commitment, it's the sign in of the agreement. Yep. So clarify, FY twenty-six supplement. And then two, approve the request from, uh, Prince Edward County Volunteer Rescue Squad for EMS levy contingency funds, that would be out of the current budget, for costs associated with building generated repairs and replacement of an HVAC unit and hot water tank for the building at a total cost of forty-six thousand, eight eighty-seven, sixty-eight. Both these items were afforded with unanimous recommendation of the public safety committee.
So moved. Second. Two about Emmett?
Yes.
Two about Townsend?
Yes.
Two about Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins says yes. Two about Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
And Dr. supervisor Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, just take a second. This is, I think, a long time coming. For the, as we've talked about, currently the way the system operates, if I call nine-one-one, my call is going to go to the town PD. If I need service from the Prince Edward Sheriff's Office, that call then has to be transferred to the sheriff's office. You've got one person there overnight. If that person's not busy or not in the restroom and is able to take that call, you still got a little bit of that call delay in that transfer. So this certainly is going to provide redundancy and backup and, and hopefully allow us to more effectively and efficiently serve the community for emergency operations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Do I go to the county military for?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. First, our new website was launched on Monday, June second. Site features, I'll say, a cleaner look and greater ease of use, especially if you're using portable devices and phones and tablets. Please to get a chance to take a look at that. Emergency radio system federal appropriation. In last year's FY twenty, or the current year's FY twenty-five budget, Senators Kane and Warner had a one million, six hundred and ninety thousand dollar appropriation for our joint radio system project. Because the budget was never approved and it was a continuing resolution, that got dropped. But they have again asked for the appropriation to be included in the FY twenty-six budgets. We'll keep our fingers crossed because that will, that will reduce the amount of funds that not only Prince Edward, but Towne of Farmville, Hampton City, and Longwood will have to come out of pocket for. We are currently out to bid with bids due at the end of month on the worship and convenience site. I know hopefully we'll have a number of bidders bid on that project, and we've also secured a, a temporary site for use during construction. We've had the final plat put together showing the right-of-way dedication for the Business Park Access Road once recorded. VDOT is prepared to take that road into the state system for maintenance.
Wait, is worship temporary site to be located?
Right in front.
In front, okay.
Yeah.
Where that deal is?
Little construction site right there.
Oh, okay.
Yep. The hip park, we worked with the CRC last week to submit a five hundred thousand dollar state economic and infrastructure grant application through the Southeast Crescent Regional Commission. Grant funds will be used for right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation for Precipentary Fork Road. We should know a little bit later this summer how that application goes. We're also waiting here from the Virginia Economic Development Partnership Business Ready Sites Grant Program. Business three forty, VDOT's working with the town and county to study and identify options to improve the intersection at Precipentary Fork Road to facilitate, I'll say, right-term movements off of westbound Third Street. And they're looking to hold a community information meeting this fall. Connects project as of June first, a total of nine hundred and forty customers have now been hooked up for service. The Zion Hill sidewalk grant application, as recommended by the board, has been submitted. Thanks again, Supervisor Amber, if you could pass our thanks to Lauren and the staff at CRC for all their help on that. Tobacco Commission, their next round of funding has a July seventeenth deadline, and we're looking for possible grant applications there. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we go to the anti-financial reports. The legislature report?
Reports are in the packet. If you have any questions, we don't need any action from the board.
Okay, okay. Devin, you have counseling on this. Okay.
And your monthly reports from Animal Control Building Office and the CRC and the Visitors Center are all in there just for informational purposes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And at that time, do you want to like call the meeting for two last?
We just had one of those, was it the Heavers request bundle intervention?
Yeah, it was.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Forty-six thousand... Yeah, it was, it was $46,000, $46,000, yeah.
Well, we're going to call it, we need to vote two about Prince Edward County. Close?
Is there a motion for...
Motion to adjourn, yes.
Second. I have a question. I just have a question, Doc.
Yes, ma'am.
Was anything omitted on purpose about our strategic planning meeting?
So, I don't have any definitive dates.